Okay, Mayor, we are ready to go when you are.
Welcome to the regular Bellevue City Council meeting for February 7th, 2022. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barxdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Lee.
Are you muted, councilmember?
Let me give you an unmute.
Yeah.
There you are, thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Thank you.
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
I'm here.
Perfect, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance. Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty.
Thank you. So we have two proclamations tonight. The first one is Black History Month, which is going to be read by Councilmember Barxdale. Go ahead.
Thank you. Whereas, whereas during Black History Month, we recognize and celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black people to our nation's social, artistic, cultural, political, and economic advancement. And whereas, the story of Black History Month begins in 1915, half-century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States. In 1926, Harvard-trained historian Carter G. Woodson announced the second week of February to be Migro History Week. And whereas, in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout the American experience. And whereas, the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a more just society that lives up to our democratic ideals. And it serves as both the celebration and a powerful reminder that Black history is American history. And whereas, the disturbing events our nation has endured over the last several years reminds us that we have far to go to end racial injustice and inequity in our nation and local communities. And whereas, the city of Bellevue is strongly committed to ensuring access, equity, inclusion, and opportunity for all. And whereas, we strive to raise awareness of the history and contributions of communities of color through the city's Black History Month events, including our featured speaker and author Merritt D. Long on February 1st. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 as Black History Month and urge all residents to join us as we reflect on our shared history, commemorate and reaffirm the contributions of Black people to our communities, our country, and to the world, and continue efforts to battle racism and to build a society that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Barxdale. The next one is for Lunar New Year, Councilmembers on, would you read that, too, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas, over a billion people in many countries worldwide, including many Bellevue residents, are celebrating the Lunar New Year. And whereas, the Lunar New Year started on February 1st this year and is a time when people gather together to celebrate with family and friends. And whereas, this is the year of the tiger, one of the 12 animal signs that comes from the Chinese zodiac. And whereas, people born this year are said to assume the traits of a tiger, including resilience and strength. And whereas, while in-person gatherings are more challenging because of COVID-19, the city of Bellevue hopes our community can celebrate and enjoy virtually the various cultural events and performances. And whereas, the beginning of the Lunar New Year is a celebration of spring and the hope it brings. And whereas, the city of Bellevue recognizes the value of its diverse residents and the significant cultural contribution of our Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities. And now, therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the week of February 7th as Week of the Lunar New Year and encourage residents to join our neighbors in this annual celebration, while also wishing good fortune, health, and happiness to all residents, workers, and visitors.
Thank you. Do we have any tigers on the council? No? Okay. Uh, now, we're lucky tonight to have with us former mayor of Bellevue, current King County Council Chair Claudia Valducci to give us an update. Council, Council Chair Valducci.
Thank you very much, and thank you for some time tonight. I like to come at least once a year and report out on what we've been up to at the King County Council and what's coming up so that we can keep you informed and represent you well. Thank you, Charmaine, for sharing the PowerPoint. So, I don't know if you recognize this, this is right behind City Hall, this picture here. The wind was blowing, it was a lovely day, next slide, please. So, uh, I'm gonna go through just a few quick slides to sort of summarize some of the high points, and then I'm happy to take questions from members. But last year, as in the previous year, our focus was largely on responding to the COVID pandemic and leading our region through a recovery. At King County, due to all of the federal funding and support that we received, we passed through almost $800 million in COVID-19 relief and recovery, mostly for things like direct response to the pandemic in the public health sphere, vaccination, sites for people who needed to be isolated or quarantined, testing, education outreach. But we also were able to put funding into economic recovery in the areas that you see here on this slide. I will say, because you will appreciate this, councilmembers, in the last two years, we passed 13 budgets. I think the city manager will appreciate that, as well as a former budget guy, 13 budgets. Just think about that for a second, it was a tremendous amount of work just to get the money out. You may have heard about some challenges at King County originally, putting out some of the rent relief funding that came through. We have caught up on the original backlog after setting up an entirely new computer system to process safely and fairly this money. But the challenge we're gonna face now is that we're about to run out of federal funding. So I think together, one of the things we might do together this year is try to advocate for a successor to some of that relief funding, because the problem really hasn't gone away in terms of people needing rental assistance. Next slide, please. In areas that I know the city council has been tracking closely, we had a number of efforts to address our housing costs regionally and homelessness. I don't need to tell you, there was a very lovely event, you see a picture of it here, where we finally got to break ground on the East Gate homeless shelter permanent and ultimately a site for permanent supportive housing and affordable housing as well. This has been just an incredible partnership. Certainly, the city has worked very, very hard to make this, this event come to pass, and I was just really excited to join with Mayor Robinson. And I think most of the councilmembers, almost all of you were there that day to celebrate this finally starting to come up out of the ground. Just as a reminder to the public, when this shelter opens, we will finally have the full suite of emergency shelters that we have planned, long planned, for East King County, including the Women and Family Shelter in Kirkland, the Youth and Young Adult Shelter in Redmond, plus this one, and of course, the recent opening of the Mary's Place Shelter in Bellevue, which is a wonderful addition to help out people in need. Beyond emergency shelter in 2020, we also began to make progress on our systemic approach to reducing homelessness. The King County Regional Homeless Authority has been stood up now. As our executive director, Mark Dones, likes to point out, in 2020, they had one employee. This year, they have, I want to say, 32. And I sit on the board, I represent the King County Council on that boards, along with members of the SCA who represent suburban cities. They are now managing 263 contracts in King County, starting to really sort of be the main service provider in emergency homelessness response. And one of the key things I want to point out is that we are actually now working on reforming how we count the numbers of people living in homelessness in King County. It's a challenging thing, I know some of you participated in the one-night count that was done annually prior to last year. We've known for a long time that that was an undercount. But as we start to use, build and use better data systems and then cross-check against each other, we find that the problem is actually far bigger than has been talked about previously, maybe as much as three times bigger. So this is all really important, painful, but important steps towards having a full understanding of who by name is living in homelessness in our county so that we can connect them to the services and the housing that they need. And finally, as I think you're all aware, we are well on the way now to starting to create sub-area plans for homelessness, including for East King County. This is very important, it's important that this regional authority understand how this problem shows up in the different parts of our county and that we target solutions towards the problems as we see them. I look forward to working with you all on that as it goes forward. Next, I know that you will have, I'm sorry, not next slide, just the next bullet, thanks, Charmaine. Health or housing, I know is a hot topic. This is the county's plan to bring up to 1,600 people experiencing chronic homelessness off the streets and into permanent housing with the supports they need to stay housed. The county council, in the last two years, first approved the funding for this program and then approved the implementation plan for the program. And we're now in implementation with the executive branch purchasing properties across the county. They have purchased eight so far. They're looking to purchase between two and three additional properties and to start operations this year. I know that you will have been hearing about the discussions around the former La Quinta Inn at South Kirkland, just across the border from Bellevue, west, northwest Bellevue there. And I just want to make sure that you're aware, because there's been a lot of communications about this, but I don't know that there's been a lot of clarity. The King County Department of Community and Human Services is the lead on identifying locations and negotiating purchase and sale agreements. They are in discussions with the La Quinta owners, those are advanced discussions, but they are still doing due diligence on key aspects of the sale, and they're not prepared to make an announcement yet as to whether they will close the sale. But I hope to hear, I hope to hear a final decision within a week or so, maybe a little bit longer. So we should know very, very soon whether that is the next location. And then, I just want to, for the, you all will have heard this before, that is just the beginning of a process. The county will need to select an operator, will need to work with that operator and the community to establish things like rules of operation, agreements with the neighborhood as to how they're going to be a good neighbor, setting up community lines of communication, which I will expect will include some kind of a good neighbor committee, similar to what this council directed to be set up around the congregations for the homeless shelter that's coming in East Gate. So a lot more to go, a lot of work with the community to go. We'll keep you informed as I learn, I will keep you all informed. The city of Kirkland is very engaged, this is, of course, in their city. And so I'm happy to answer whatever questions, but that's really the state of play at this point. Finally, just when it comes to affordable housing, I continue to chair the Regional Affordable Housing Committee, which sits under the Growth Management Planning Council. Want to thank Mayor Robinson for her continued service on the committee. She brings not only Bellevue's perspective, but I believe she may be the SCA Caucus Chair this year, which means that she helps to organize the county's, city's work there. The one really big thing I want to bring to your attention, we have our first meeting of the year later this week. Want to say it's the first meeting of the year, I'm losing track of the year already. You will probably have heard about House Bill 1220, which was adopted in 2021. In addition to that directing that cities and jurisdictions like counties plan for what they call in the bill special needs housing, which includes things like homelessness housing, it also requires that the Department of Commerce give to counties a measure of countywide need for affordable housing in bands, probably from 0% of area median income to 120% of area median income. So all the way from housing to bring people out of homelessness to what we would call maybe workforce housing. When we get that number, one of the things our committee is gonna be working on this year is figuring out how do we distribute that number out throughout the county so that when we all get around to updating our comprehensive plans, we plan for enough activities in order to meet the total need. Never done it before, it's the right direction, I want to say, just speaking in my opinion, because we currently plan for a number of jobs and a number of housing units in our comprehensive plans without regard to how much the jobs pay or how much the houses cost, and you end up with a mismatch. So that's gonna be a really big job, we've never done this before, and I look forward to working through it with you all. Next slide now. That's the longest one, I'll share with you, the rest of them go faster. In public safety, in this year, we'll be working with our executive, community stakeholders, and various partners, including contract cities who work with, who contract with the sheriff for police services, to appoint a new sheriff and to think about ways we might evolve how we provide public safety in King County so that it is effective and responsive to the community and provides equity and addresses many of the issues that have been raised during the racial justice reckoning that we've had over the last two years. This is all in response to a charter amendment voted by the voters in 2020. We already have an interim sheriff, her name is Patty Cole Tyndall, she's been the undersheriff for a while, and now she'll be acting until we hire a new sheriff. Next slide, please. Regional planning is, there's a lot of regional planning going on this year, long-range planning, and some of the big things happening, we will be adopting the first-ever regional housing strategy at the Puget Sound Regional Council. This is meant to be a helpful guide and some ideas and suggestions for how cities and other jurisdictions like counties might go about pursuing housing policy, meant to be there for assistance and guidance during the comprehensive planning process. We're very close to a final version, we should vote on it later this month. And we'll be also, as you probably are keenly aware, updating the regional transportation plan. I call out climate and safety, because this has been in the process for a while. Want to call out again Mayor Robinson, who serves on the Executive Board for Bellevue at Puget Sound Regional Council, and Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Robertson, who serves on the Transportation Policy Board. We've been, I think, well-aligned on these issues, making sure that our regional plan, when it's adopted, meets our climate goals. We all know that transportation is the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions in the Northwest, and our regional planning has to sort of catch up to that. And also with safety, just acknowledging that cities like Bellevue have been very aggressive and working on planning to make our streets safer nationally and in the state, the numbers are going in the wrong direction. We have seen more, an increasing level of serious injuries and deaths on our roads. So the idea that our regional plan should drive more planning for safety is, I think, very important to me. The city's been very supportive of this idea, because of course, you've made it a priority as well. So I look forward to working on those. Next slide, please. Lots to talk about on mobility and transportation, but I will share the top line. Last year, we updated Metro Service Guidelines, Strategic Plan, and Long Range Plan. It was a massive policy and planning lift. I really, I know we've done this before, but I really can't say enough about how Councilmember Robertson led the SCA Caucus of the Regional Transit Committee through that process. It was a tremendous amount of work, very interactive, really met with all the stakeholders, and I don't know how we would have gotten through all the difficult issues without that effort. So thank you so much for just strong and very good leadership on that. We came to a good place, I think, in the end. The meaning of stars is breaking up. In any event, we will be also going through a future planning in our budget this year. I've been working to try to keep the rapid ride K on track. That is the line on this map here that goes from Bellevue north into Kirkland. Hopefully, we get that funded and get the next steps to get the capital investments done so it stays on track for some time later this decade, instead of slipping into the following decade. We've updated youth Orca cards, this is just a little thing, but I have to say I'm awfully proud of it. I was able to get funding to provide free cards, not the service on the cards, but the cards themselves to youth who are getting their first Orca card, they don't have to pay the $5 fee. The idea is to get those cards into the hands of young people so they can learn to ride and become lifelong riders. We're currently working on the, between King County and Sound Transit, it's not written here, but I want to point out on the bus restructure plan, so that when Light Rail opens in just about a year, sometime, sometime next 2023, maybe 18 months, the bus system will then wrap around it and the service will change so that it feeds into the Light Rail system. Want to encourage you to take a look, we're in the public comment period currently for Metro's plans there, and they will, they will close that and then make it, it'll come to the county council for a final decision on that restructure. Finally, just super excited with all the work on trails going on. Saw several of you at the opening of the South Bellevue segment of E-mail of East Trail that opened that beautiful wide-paved trail from the Factoria area down south to almost Avi Mac. Wanted to congratulate you all on the opening of the I-90 Mountains to Sound Greenway Trail, it hooks right up with it. And we do now have funding for the Wilburton Trestle and the 520 Trail Corridor Connector, so lots and lots of trail openings. Next slide, please. Last year, we updated our strategic climate action plan at King County, that was a big lift, I commend it to you. We also finally passed the Climate Action Toolkit, which is available for jurisdictions to make use of. There's a lot here, but I'm just gonna leave it there and we'll answer any questions. And then finally, one of, next slide, please. One of the best things that I get to do as a districted council member for this part of King County is that I have access to county funds and sometimes district funds to support really, really great projects and agencies in my district. Last year, just a few of them, we were able to use some money from the Vet Seniors and Human Services Levy to support a group called For Tomorrow, serving the Latino community on the east side, and Hope Link with Rental Assistance. We were able to make a grant to the Bellevue College Veterans Resource Center. We got $335,000 to District 6 for waterworks programs, including $25,000 for City of Bellevue's watershed management plan public engagement. We funded community service organizations like the Immigrant Women's Community Center, Old Friends Club, and East Side Culture Coalition. And then over $200,000 to 13 different organizations for youth sports, including Bellevue Boys and Girls Club Basketball League, Kindering's Virtual Play Program, Rainier Athletes, and more. And then the last thing I will say before I stop is this, I'd like to remind you and everyone who's listening that we have a really cool van donation program. King County, and actually, no, not one, King County runs the largest van pool program in the world. It's, nobody can prove it's not true, so I keep saying it until somebody does, but there's not one that we can find that's bigger. So we have an awful lot of vans, and the federal regulations say they have to be retired when they reach 70,000 miles, and they still have a lot of life in them. So we give away a few vans every year in every district. In the last year, we were able to give some to Community Homes, Global Social Business Partners, which is a partner with the city in the Bellevue Urban Garden, to Lifewire and to Ten City Four. I'd just like to put it out there, because this comes up every single year. So if you know an organization that could benefit from a van for the purpose of transporting people, that's really the only requirement, please let us know, because we get to help them out every year. Next slide, please, that is the end. There is my contact information, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much for this time, I know I took a lot, but there's a lot going on.
Oh, thank you, thank you for the excellent representation that you do of our city. Really appreciate the good work going on from the county. Does anybody have any comments or questions of Council Chair Valducci? I'm not seeing any, so we will give you a break tonight. Oh, Deputy Mayor, I see your hand up, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, yeah, one, one question, and again, Chair Valducci, thanks for being here tonight. A lot of great information, a lot of things happening, as you mentioned. I just want to touch briefly and just get your, your thoughts on the, as you rightly mentioned, the hot topic of the La Quinta Inn acquisition. And been hearing a lot from our constituents, as well as Kirkland residents, and, and I appreciate some of the details that you offered there. But what we're, at least what I'm hearing is, they don't, maybe you could touch a little bit on the criteria for why the La Quinta Inn was selected, other than having a willing seller, obviously. But just curious, the process that King County approaches looking for a property, because I've gotten that question quite a bit, and then also, and you touched on a little bit, you just mentioned a little bit about what the outreach would look like going forward after the acquisition for both residents, and there's quite a few businesses, schools, et cetera, around there. So could you just touch on that a little bit, what that might look like? And you're absolutely right, this is, you know, at the very beginning here, just starting, but I think that would really inform a lot of people that have a lot of questions about this and are only hearing bits and pieces, and like you said, not all of it's accurate.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, happy to share a few words. The, the main criteria for the locations that the executive has been considering and then purchasing are that it have the right kind of rooms, individualized rooms with doors, that it have the right kind of internal systems like airflow, because we want to make sure that it's COVID-safe. Things like that, like that it works for the program. They're looking for buildings of a certain size, because we have this funding for a goal of 1,600 people coming off the streets. We didn't want to buy, you know, 100 buildings of 16 units each, so they had to be of a certain size. And of course, they, we did look for willing sellers, we're not condemning properties for this purpose. So, I mean, I can send you what they've put out, there's not a lot more than that, it's pretty much the, what we're looking for. The question about public outreach, I understand that the executive's office is gonna be reaching out to the nearby neighbors and the nearby business owners prior to making an announcement, so that they are not surprised by the decision whether to buy or not to buy. And then, once, if there is a decision to buy, then there will have to be more public engagement and outreach, and that has not been planned yet, but we will have to plan it with the city of Kirkland and with the, the executive together. As you may recall, with the Silver Cloud, and there was a similar process in that Redmond area that was right next to a different part of Bellevue. And there, the executive branch did what they do, they negotiated a deal, they entered into a purchase and sale agreement, and then we went out and had public engagement. And as the representative for that area, I hosted a town hall, we had a large turnout, went for hours and hours. But I'm going to participate how, whatever, in whatever way works best, right? Like, I will participate with the city of Kirkland, with you all, if you choose to join with the executive, or I can host one on my own again, as I did before, but we'll be sure to get information out. And it's gonna take a few months before any of these are ready to open. So we'll work at putting more information out so people can understand when and where their concerns get addressed.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I have one, actually, Council Chair. It seems like one of the missing pieces of a four housing is the voucher program. And knowing that we don't have tons of room to build more single-family homes, it seems that using vouchers for rentals is a really good fit for Bellevue. And yet, it seems like it's hard to get those out for the county, to get those out and distributed to the agencies that provide vouchers to their, to their, the people, them. And so, do you have any thought on how we can expedite that program?
So I'm gonna have to look into that for you, Mayor, because there's a number of different voucher programs, and I don't want to get them confused, like there's these emergency vouchers, there are more permanent voucher programs through the federal government. There's the, the Section 8 is itself. There's the, the Section 8 is itself a kind of a voucher program where you have those long waiting lists. And so let me, let me connect with you after this and make sure I understand exactly what you're looking for and, and we'll see what we can do. Because anything we can do to expedite funding for people to get roofs over their heads is of course something we ought to be looking into. I agree.
I am talking about the federal ones.
Okay.
The federal voucher program. But thank you. I look forward to hearing more about that. Okay. And Councilmember Stokes, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the comments made about the proposed shelter or permanent housing. And, and, and the questions asked by Deputy Mayor and, you know, there's a good answers and out there and process, but looking back on both of those, it seems that it would help a lot if we could have a better, get a better understanding from the very start with, with people in the neighborhood as to what this is going to be, how it's going to be run. We know all of that. It's not something that's that is, depends on whoever we get and where it is and everything else. So what happens is we're, we're months behind on a small group, but very vocal and very, you know, pressing forward on, you can't have this here. You can't have us here for this reason because it's going to be X, Y, Z and everything. It's going to be awful and horrible. And they have no idea what this is. And I, I feel for, for them in a sense that they're being led into or thinking that something is going to happen. It's not going to happen. And that the county and the cities are going to work to make this thing work. And it's not just taking people and putting them in a shelter and leaving them alone. And certainly we can get messages out to people and get messages for the cities to actually use that also, because again, we have to work with all these people who are concerned about it. And it's, it's very organized and you also, I don't know if you've seen it yet, but there is a, a long letter from an attorney who's raising issues about this. So I think we're, we're just somewhat, sometimes kind of behind the, the information and outreach effort. And I don't think we can wait till we get a contract to actually tell people about if we do this, or this is how our approach is overall. And I think we get that out there would help the next time because there will be more of these. Does that make, make some sense?
Yeah, I, I hear you, Councilmember. And, and there's definitely some things that we can do now, right? Can't turn back the clock, but there's definitely some things we can do now to make sure that we're putting out good information about what health through housing is and what it isn't. I mean, I, I see some of those same concerns. There seems to be confusion about whose project this is. And understandably, we've got the new King County Regional Homelessness Authority. This is not their project. This is King County's project. And why is that? So I don't, I, I definitely hear that we could do better at the coordination. The one chicken and egg issue that in my view is always going to exist whenever we do any kind of challenging citing decisions around homelessness or anything else that people really don't want to see is do we notify the entire county? You might have one of these in, in your backyard and have like this whole narrowing process from however many thousands of sites down to zero? Do we notify people just when we've picked the site and then work on the specific issues around that site or somewhere in between? I've never seen people be happy no matter what point on the scale you select, but I, I definitely hear you with working with particularly the idea of making sure the cities have good information that you all can put out since you're the closest to the folks in the neighborhoods and are probably hearing from even a lot more people than I am, and I'm hearing from quite a few. So we'll take you up on that as a challenge to provide good information to you all and to the residents so that they know what's coming and we can engage better. I also agree that it's a little challenging to tell people when we have an operator, then we'll work with you. But until we have an operator, there's not somebody there, like there's nobody there to say, we're the people who will be your neighbors and here's how we want to work with you. What do you think? Like there, you can set up rules. City of Redmond just voted in a new land use code that includes quite a few rules around how things like this have to happen. I know Bellevue did that as well prior to the congregations for the homeless projects being permitted. And so, but DCHS has got people sitting in an office who do contracts, right? They don't run homelessness housing. So we're kind of stuck in this, gotta do it, don't have the people in place yet, who are the ones to do it? So we do the best we can and we will continue to try to do better.
Well, I think that would help. It, it's, I mean, I feel sorry for the, the impressions that, that people get. And also it just seems that we know enough about this and it's not that different from place to place, frankly, in terms of the overall concepts and what we do that we could get further ahead. We spend so much time having to deal with people who are really upset. A lot of them, they, they don't want it anywhere. It's pretty clear, but you know, when they say, yes, we want to help with the homeless, we want to do this or that, but we don't want people who are just, you know, going to be criminals all over our area. There's a reality between, you know, that's out there that they're not hearing. And I know some people are not going to accept it, but most of the population looks at it and wonders about it. I mean, I think we're getting some people who would be positive on this kind of having questions about it because all they hear is the awful things that people are talking about. So I just, I think we could do a better job in, in overall telling people what our, our plans are for this whole effort. How are we going to house and work with all these homeless people and get them off the streets and get them better? We, we're not telling a good story on that to everybody. We're so focused on the process of when we're going to do this or that. So I think we have the capability to do it, but we need to do it.
There's a tremendous amount of information available at the King County Health Through Housing website and I will, and so you should definitely make use of that. We, we put together massive FAQs the last time we went through this. And I, but I will take your concerns and suggestions back to the folks who are implementing this and will definitely continue to work with the city on getting information out.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you, Chair Valdutchi. There are lots of information in that side deck that you presented. I want to thank my colleagues for your questions so far. I have a couple of things I want to add. And that is that with the climate action and the safety piece, thank you for that. I would say that certainly we've been, we're actually getting a presentation tonight about our own environmental stewardship plan. And just how we get to 50% greenhouse gas reductions by 2030, when it's already 2022. So to the degree that more partnership or resources can be provided, we certainly are very lean and mean in terms of getting things done, in terms of not a lot of, of staff, but a lot to do. And the same, I think with safety, you know, our vision zero and our safe, safe system approach. So we're hoping that, that that will align us well for federal funding, but to the degree that the county can join us in getting more resources into that effort, you know, we are all in this together. And I would say the same on the economic recovery. I know we talk about residential rental assistance, but it's also, you know, the meetings that you had all during COVID for the, the commercial, the restaurant owners and those businesses that are also struggling. So making sure that we don't step off the gas pedal on trying to figure out how to, how to help those community members in both the residential as well as the commercial rents. And then related to the, the homelessness and supportive housing. I guess my comment there would be in addition to my colleagues, how do we make sure that we're funding for the resources? And what I mean by that is I think what we're seeing in a lot of the, the very people that we are hiring to provide those services that we don't pay enough to retain over the long term. So what can we do to really look at being able to pay in a way that retains the very people that are helping the most vulnerable in our community? Can we look at how our grants are structured so that we can, we can pay living wages for those jobs? And then lastly, you know, we are, I believe, going to be embarking on, looking at safe parking programs in Bellevue and what might be possible. So to the degree that the county or CEO or ED Doones is also looking at that as part of the regional housing homelessness authority, I think that's another space where there can be partnership in that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm going to try to say just a few things about each of those, but that's, that's, these are big picture issues and a lot going on and a lot that needs to happen. On climate and safety, part of the reason why I am so insistent on the regional plan, including really strong policy language around these things is over time, that policy language becomes funding priority plans and numbers that, that we use to sift through all the hundreds of millions of federal funding we get each year in this region. So the idea is if we set these as really high priorities, money will follow. It's, it takes some time. One of the other things I'm trying to do is get us to speed it up and do things in, in a better order. But so that is, that's all, it's all about putting your money where your mouth is. So I, I hope that that is one way. And then I hope that there will be other ways, but that is one way in which we can drive towards better funding for those programs. With regard to money for recovery, I hear you and I hear the need. I think you've joined me in several of the calls we had with local small businesses and heard really, you know, very heart touching stories about how people are struggling to keep their businesses, which is their livelihood alive. The best options we have right now are funding that either didn't get used from prior appropriations of COVID relief from the feds or that for whatever reason comes back. There will be a chunk of that. We'll be seeing that in the first quarter or so at King County. I think you all may see some as well. But when that money is gone, I mean, I, you probably don't need me to tell you. It's not like as big as our budgets can look. When you just look at the bottom line, there's not stacks of money in the corner going unspent. It's all sort of dedicated to something. So we will need to look for new funding sources if we want to continue those programs. And the amount that a Bellevue or even a King County could raise is going to look very small compared to what the feds have done in the last few years. So I'm not optimistic. There will be a lot more relief to come, but I am committed to try. Then with regard to resources and pay for people who are providing human services in general, this is a known challenge. One of the reasons that the health through housing sites aren't open yet is because we haven't been able to secure operators that we want, the kind of operators we want for some of the locations. And that's because they're stretched so thin with their staffing. Just to give you one example of something that King County is trying to do in this space, the voters approved the Vet Starts for Kids levy reauthorization last fall. It includes a program, a pilot program to prop up wages in the not-for-profit childcare sector. With, we're trying to figure out how can government help to improve the wages of the people who work in these areas, or else we're not going to have people to do these really important jobs that we want. And then finally, I am not aware of any safe parking programs that we're working on. That would be a new one on me, but I will definitely keep my eye out and make sure to talk to CEO Doones of the King County Housing Authority. And if, if you all come up with some good programmatic ideas, let's make sure that we share them. So just a little bit, a little bit on each of four very, very large issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I really appreciate the update and having the chance to interact with you. So have a good evening and we will continue on with our meeting here.
Thank you so much.
Next up is the agenda. We need to amend the agenda to remove item 8E from the consent calendar. This is an item that's going to be brought, brought back in the future for consideration at another meeting. So is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I move to approve the agenda amended to remove item 8E from the consent calendar.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, next up we have oral communications. See clerk, do we have anybody signed up tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are four pre-registered speakers. And with that, I will call our first speaker. And that is Cheryl Pietro Monaco. And Ms. Pietro Monaco, can you hold for one second while we get the timer up? Okay, it looks like Steph is having a technical issue. Let me check and get the timer up. Okay, Ms. Pietro Monaco, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
All right. I originally thought that I was going to be discussing whether or not I could opt out and keep my old meter, but I just talked to Chad Beck, and he said that we are being required to have an AMI, AMI meter put on. And we don't have to have the transmitter. My main concerns have always been that it's not just the transmitter that causes the problem. It's the AMI meters. I have a non-transmitting AMI meter on my power. And I did ask Chad if this puts out, if the water meters put out EMF. Unfortunately, there are some people in this world, myself included, that are sensitive to EMF frequencies. A lot of people don't recognize that as being a, a real problem. But that's because they don't experience it. I only found out how badly I was affected by it when the cell tower went in. And not when it just went in, but when it got turned on. Before it got turned on, I was fine. After it got turned on, I didn't sleep for about a month. And then couldn't figure out what was wrong with me and was told by someone else that it had to be the cell tower. So I got some protective information and some items that helped me sleep. And honestly, if it hadn't have been for that and the information I was given by friends, I wouldn't have known. So I'm extremely disappointed that all my emails, including from my lawyer, are being ignored. And that I will be given an AMI meter without a transmitter. It's not the transmitter that's the big problem. I don't want one. I don't want a transmitter, but I don't want an AMI meter because not only do they put out EMFs, which Chad did, did corroborate, but they also put out ultrasound. And the ultrasound are put out every four seconds around the clock. Which to me is horrifying because I have three different types of plumbing in my house. And to have ultrasound pounding away at my plumbing around the clock every four seconds, which has never happened in the history of my house before, is not comforting. And then the EMS that can transmit through water, which most people don't realize it can do, but there's a company called Horace Harmonics that does this for huge acreage on farmland. And they put one coupling and it goes throughout the whole irrigation system with EMS. These are healthy EMS, yours or not. So I am very disturbed about this. I will be sending out a liability warning to the city of Bellevue and also the Bellevue Utilities because I don't know how this is going to affect my plumbing, the three different types of plumbing that I've got, and I don't know how it's going to affect my health. But I'm not real happy about this at all. And I did warn that this is what I would do if it was forced upon me, which it is being forced upon me. So if there's any way for me to back out of this, I am all ears. I would prefer to have my old meter. And if it blows up on me, I would pay whatever it takes to fix, whatever it needs fixing, but I do not want the new meter, period.
Thank you, Ms. Pietro Monaco. The next speaker on the list is Christian Dorsett. And Mr. Dorsett, I do not see you connected by name. If you are connected under a different name, can you please use the raised hand function so I can locate you? Do not see a hand. Moving on to the next speaker, which is Stephanie Charrington. And Ms. Charrington, can you hear me?
I can.
Perfect. Your time begins now.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Stephanie Charrington. And as the Executive Director of the Backbone Organization of Eastside Pathways Community Partnership, I'm really here this evening just to say thank you for generously supporting Eastside Pathways and the community in our effort to ensure that all stakeholders, individuals, public, private, nonprofit organizations work not in isolation, but together to ensure equitable pathways are available for children, youth and young adults. Especially for those most impacted by current systems. Your invaluable participation and support of Eastside Pathways Backbone allows us to continue to deliver on strategy, communication, convening, facilitation and data for the community. And it's because of the support from the city of Bellevue, along with many, many others, that the Backbone is able to skillfully, professionally and regularly convene the nearly 75 partners to align and agree upon common goals, including importantly racial equity. And then to guide for us, the Backbone to guide each partner to regularly examine their individual and collective behaviors, practices, policies in order to improve systems. Because of this partner Because of this partnership and our aligned work, many Eastside Pathways partners have said their individual work to support children, youth, and young adults is better. More important, collectively, we're breaking down the systemic barriers that we often, as the adults in the community create for children, youth, and young adults. A few highlights of the important collective work currently happening. We're improving systems for early learning specifically for the Latino Hispanic community through the work with NISO programs and several dozen early learning providers. The Latinx community is working with these early learning providers to improve their practices to reduce stress on parents and increase access to critical supports and services. In the mindset's essential skills and habits work, we call that mesh. Organizations are improving their own practices to support high school students' mental health and social emotional well-being. And then working with the community partners and organizational partners to examine and modify their own internal practices or policies to increase racial equity and reduce harm for employees and communities of color that they serve. This is critical so that we can ultimately get to a racially equitable community system. Thank you for your continued support of the Eastside Pathways Backbone so that we can continue to support the dozens and dozens of partners. And I'd like to just mention next, my colleague and Eastside Pathways Data Officer Peyton Richardson will be sharing a bit about the Eastside Pathways Community Report. Thank you so, so much for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Charrington. And as she said, our final registered speaker is Peyton Richardson. And Mr. Richardson, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Perfect. Thank you very much to the council, to the city, and as well to Stephanie. My name is Peyton Richardson, the data officer for Eastside Pathways. Just again, I want to thank everyone for the investment into the collective work that the Eastside Pathways Partnership is doing. Wanted to highlight a little bit about our 2021 community report, which illustrates the work of the past twenty-two months in East King County, especially the collaborative work of our partners, which make up the partnership, you know, representing organizational, community, and philanthropic interests. The community report, supported by quantitative and qualitative data on the work of the community toward better outcomes for student, youth, and families in the Cradle to Pathway, as well as collective efforts to address challenges that are raised, that have been raised by COVID pandemic and the call for racial justice and overall systems change. Just going to highlight a few things that were a part of that report. At the beginning of the pandemic, the Eastside Pathways Partnership convened stakeholders from around King County to do a needs assessment to pool their necessary resources. And, you know, since March of 2020, there have been over forty-five meetings convening about seventy-six organizations across sectors from education to government and community-based organizations. And the things have allowed organizations such as Nourishing Networks to work with the city of Bellevue on addressing food insecurity. System Escolar, which is a parent organization, a partner of Eastside Pathways, worked with local school districts, Bellevue and Lake Washington, to enhance the frequency and equity of communication to Spanish-speaking families that are navigating a remote learning environment. And these are just some of the many highlights that illustrate the collaborative work moving beyond just programmatic change eventually toward the systemic change that Eastside Pathways is seeking to support. The community report also describes the work in the area of early learning, specifically for Hispanic and Latinx students in East King County. Another another partner of ours, NISO Programs, collects data from families to help early child service providers adjust their policies toward equity, such as when another partner, Eastside Baby Corner, amended their internal policy to allow families to directly access critical services without a third-party reference or enrollment in the school system. The last thing I'll highlight is the community reports really uplift of the importance of racial equity in Eastside Pathways partnerships work through tools such as the Eastside Pathways Equity Page, ensuring that the partner organizations understand and have a path towards equity that they can be guided on, as well as affinity spaces, providing dialogue and the exploration of equity through multiple lenses. And woven throughout this report, you know, racial equity is not just a spoken value, but also a tangible goal with a strategic pathway. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. At this point, that is the end of our pre-registered list of speakers. If there is anyone else connected to this meeting who would like to make communication to the council, please use the raise hand function or star nine if you're connected with a phone. Mayor, I do not see any additional hands that would close oral communications.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve our consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're on to our study session items. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce the first of three study session items?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. The first topic on your study session agenda this evening is an update on our utilities department's advanced meter infrastructure project, also known as AMI, as well as council direction on a potential non-communicating water meter service program, also referred to as our opt-out option. Joining us this evening are Nob Oto, the director, Chad Beck, Smart Utility Program Manager, and Todd Dahlberg, Business Service Manager, all from the Utilities Department. Also joining us this evening is Vanya News of Agic, who is the Chair of the Environmental Services Commission. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Nob to begin presentation.
First of all, unfortunately, Chair Connectives has to leave. Or Vanya, are you still here? Vanya, if you're able to stay for a little bit, I was going to go out of order and have you give your recommendation even before I start my presentation. Are you able to stay for long enough?
Sure.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you. So a- as Mr. Miyake mentioned, this is the Chair of the Environmental Services Commission, Vanya Knezevich. And she would like to present the commission's recommendation on an opt-out program. And so we're going to do things a little bit backwards, but I think we'll be able to manage that.
Sharon Nezovich, thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. And thank you for the introduction, Nob. So do you want to go ahead and start, Sharon Nezovich?
Absolutely. Good evening, council members and everyone else present tonight. As outlined in the memo dated January twenty-sixth of this year, Environmental Services Commission had a robust discussion on May sixth, two thousand twenty-one. And we have taken in consideration information provided to us by residents and utility staff before we voted four to two in opposition of the proposed AMI opt-out program. We trust in scientific research around AMI. And we find it very difficult to consider voting for the opt-out presented to the city by the utility staff, not because we don't think that the work that the utility staff has not done adequately, but it is our concern that the cost will land on the majority of the residents at some point. We think the staff have done a great job in trying to capture all the costs and have implemented or would like to implement certain fees. But we have thirty-seven thousand residents and about forty-five residents who have come forward asking for an opt-out. It is, I would, we would think that it's financially not a sustainable opt-out program. And that is all I have for you tonight. And I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you. Now, are you, do you have a limited time here? Can you stay through the presentation and answer questions? Or should we ask you questions right now?
I I will, I'm more than happy to stay. I just might be interrupted with my child.
Okay, well, your child's welcome to join us.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go ahead with the presentation and we'll come back to asking questions. Go ahead, Nob.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newan House, and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to brief you on the utilities' smart metering project, also known as AMI. First of all, can you see my slide?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, as you know, this is a key foundational element of our smart city approach and something that we're pretty excited to be able to offer. So tonight, we're going to provide an update on the AMI project as well as the proposed non-communicating water meter service program, also known as the opt-out option. Utilities is able to offer the opt-out program, but council approval is needed to implement, implement sorry, and implement the the fees associated with the opt-out program. So tonight, I'll start off with a brief refresher on the AMI system and components and provide an update on the project and our accomplishments. Additionally, we will discuss the opt-out option. So the new AMI system will include a new digital meter and an attached cellular transmitter that's capable of passing along water consumption data to the utility. Unlike gas and electric meters, which are typically installed on the side of the house, a water meter is installed in a meter box in the ground at the edge of the property line next to the road. Yeah, AMI system will leverage the existing cellular infrastructure. So water consumption data will be transmitted three times per day for four to six seconds, not not twenty-four continuously every four to six seconds. The data is transmitted, as I mentioned, across a secure private cellular network using the closest commercial cell tower that already exists in the neighborhood. Consumption data is then stored in in the Itron's cloud-based meter data consumption meter data management system. And City of Bellevue receives this data through a secure VPN to generate customer bills as well as to analyze water usage trends. Now, City of Bellevue has selected meters and transmitters that are approved by all the applicable regulatory agencies. Our standard cam stop meter meters are certified for use in potable waters applications by the National Science Foundation and American Water Works Association's U.S. drinking water standards. Itron's cellular transmitter has been tested and certified as compliant with the Federal Communications Commission rules for cellular devices. Furthermore, our AMI system is secure and will protect the privacy of the customers' data. Sensitive account details such as name and billing information are not stored on the meter or the transmitter. As I mentioned, the consumption data is transmitted over a secure private cellular network, and it is only correlated to the customer account information once it's safely behind the city's secure firewall. We are very confident in the safety of our components and the security of the private customer information. We're excited to implement AMI to provide customers the benefits that council has envisioned for this project as part of the part of Bellevue's Smart City Initiative. Some of the primary benefits include the ability for customers to understand and manage their water consumption as well as to detect leaks earlier. These benefits frankly have become a customer expectation. And we're glad that we'll be able to provide the tools necessary to do this through the city's AMI project. Additionally, smart meters will help the utility ensure water quality and reduce our carbon footprint by reducing our meter reading fleet. The smart meters will also allow the utility to realize operational efficiencies. And we will be able to zero in on leaks and identify unaccounted for water and reduce wasted energy. As you made a call, the smart water meter journey has been many years in the making. In two thousand eighteen, utility selected Itron to execute our AMI project and council approved their contract in December of that year. As the project progressed, we made a pivot in our communication technology. And in December two thousand nineteen, council approved a change in which we switched from pole-mounted radio collectors to cellular transmitter solution. Cellular technology is a next generation offering. And we were able to make this change to a newer option. Additionally, using a cellular backbone removes the city's need to maintain our own collector network. So in February of last year, council approved another amendment which modified our project schedule and phasing to mitigate some of the disruptive effect effects of COVID nineteen so that we would be still able to finish the project by summer of twenty twenty-two. And beginning in April of last year, we began installing the new digital meters. Despite disruptions, we've made significant progress on this project. Starting, as I mentioned, in spring of last year, we began installing over a hundred new digital meters per day across the city. This included our residential customers as well as commercial properties and the multifamily units. We were able to replace all of our large meters measuring three inch in diameter or more. This picture you see here is of a four-inch meter at City Hall. Not an extremely large meter, but you can see that it takes multiple people lifting equipment and involves working in a fairly confined space. I'm happy to report that all three hundred and eighty-five large meters across the service area have been replaced with more accurate digital meters and are compatible with our AMI cellular transmitters. To date, the project has also installed digital meters at more than half of our customer accounts. Another good progress has been made on the project. Although good progress has been made on the project, there have been delays. Specifically, Itron has experienced unfortunate delays in large-scale production of their cellular transmitters. We were scheduled to receive the first shipment of transmitters by August of last year. These transmitters are now expected to arrive at the end of February, which is a delay of about six months. We are going to continue to work closely with Itron to mitigate the effects of this delay. Per their request, the city has authorized increased installation rates for both meters and transmitters. However, the delay does have the potential to push the date of substantial completion of the project. And again, despite these delays, we were able to accomplish several rounds of testing on a small sample of cellular transmitters. First, in July of last year, Itron installed forty-eight beta prototype units on customer meters across the city. The city and Itron coordinated basic testing of the endpoint to ensure that alarms like a burst pipe or a continuous leak are generated by the meter and transmitted by the endpoint. And last week, we began what we call our first article testing in which consumption data was collected from the meter via the transmitter and cellular transmitter and the network and processed through our billing software to successfully generate a bill. This testing process is underway and pivotal to transitioning into full-scale production of cellular transmitters. Over the coming months, Itron will continue to install new digital meters for the remaining eighteen thousand customer accounts within Bellevue Utility Service Area. At the end of this month, Itron will begin widespread installation of cellular transmitters on most of the forty thousand customer meters. Finally, as portion of the city have the new meters and the transmitters installed, the utility will begin transitioning from manual reads to automated meter reading. We anticipate that the AMI project and customer portal will be fully implemented in late fall of twenty twenty-two such that customers will be able to access real-time data consumption data and their bill information on their devices. So now I'd like to change gears a little bit and discuss the non-communicating water service also called opt-out option. At a two thousand eighteen council meeting, we were asked if we were considering offering an exception to the new AMI system. We are now at that point where that decision needs to be made. So why offer an opt-out program? While vast majority of our customers are looking forward to AMI and smart meters, the utility and city council have received comments from a small number of customers regarding their concerns about cellular transmitters. About forty-five of our more than thirty-seven thousand water customers have inquired about the option dropped down. Now, cellular technology is not new. As I mentioned earlier, digital meters and cellular transmitters are widely accepted throughout the utility industry and are certified as safe for use by applicable regulatory agencies. Our transmitters will communicate over existing cellular network such as Verizon, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T, and are certified by the Federal Communications Commission. Another thing we know is that water utilities in Washington do not typically offer an opt-out program. However, after much consideration, as a courtesy to some of our customers, the utility is proposing to offer the opt-out program for a limited time. AMI is the new standard meter involving comprised of a digital meter and cellular transmitter. All customers will receive new digital meters. However, for those customers who want to opt out, we would not install a cellular transmitter. Without the transmitter, the meter will not be able to send us or the customer real-time meter data. This program will only be available to existing single-family customers. Commercial and multifamily would not be eligible, and new customers would not be eligible. To achieve the full benefit of AMI, it is our goal to not have customers opting out of AMI in the long term. Maintaining two separate systems is not sustainable. This program would be a temporary exception. It will be phased out after five years. And eventually, all meters will have cellular transmitters. As such, utilities is confident that even with providing the opt-out program, all project goals would be achieved. Now, customers who choose to opt out will not be able to receive the benefits of smart water meters. For example, they will not be able to receive timely water consumption data to manage their bills. They also will not receive alerts to help identify potential leaks at their property. Additionally, customers choosing to opt out would not be eligible for water leak adjustments since these customers are choosing to forego the available tools for early leak detection. And as you know from the leak adjustment requests coming before you, an undetected leak can add up to thousands of dollars. Finally, these customers will be subject to new fees in order to cover the cost for providing an opt-out service. And there's also an impact to the utility for offering this program. We would need to continue to maintain staffing and vehicles to manually read meters. Customers who have requested to opt out are spread across the city, and it will require staff to drive to each address to manually read their meters. Additionally, there will be administrative coordination, including application review, modifications to the billing system, and reinstallation of the transmitter at a future date. Here are the proposed fees to cover the costs related to providing the opt-out service. There is a one-time application and process fee which includes the cost to install the transmitter in the future as well as recurring meter reading fee on each future bill. If a cellular transmitter has already been installed, there would also be an additional fee to cover our cost to remove it. So a total cost of about $125 on first bill would be, is anticipated, assuming that each of these fees applies, and then a $15 for each bill thereafter.
As at this point, I was going to switch over to Chair Knezevic, but and I'm hoping that she's still here to answer any questions that you have.
I am.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. So I'm gonna, we'll start off with Councilmember Lee because I believe he's the liaison for the for the Environmental Services Commission, and then I'll call on you if you raise your hand. So go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm excited about this AMI program and the benefits. And especially, I want to thank the, you know, the commission and the commission chair, Vanya, for very thoughtful consideration, you know, of the program and also especially of the opt-out option. And we also, however, heard as you have this more this evening at the oral communication, some concerns, even though it's not many. As a result, you know, these people do not wish, you know, to switch to AMI. And after, you know, the commission's very thorough review and discussion, they have recommended against the opt-out option. And however, the staff has recommended the to include an opt-out option. But based on the number one, as I understand, as you've heard the presentation, the staff just made minimal you know, impact and on the on the system, on what we do, and also on the ultimate success of accomplishing the mission. And as a result, they recommended the opt-out option. And however, you know, it's important that this is something that will require council consideration. And I believe that you've heard it, and I think it's important that we have to decide whether in consideration what the staff positions are and what they can do, and also in consideration of any questions the council may have. I will be also interested to know what the council's conversation questions and ultimate decision that we will make. So I want to again thank the commission for very thoughtful diligent discussion and also the staff's clear presentation and rationale for their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Nav. And thanks, thank you, Commission Chair for coming. So I mainly just have some questions. I just want to understand this. And I know that you went over part of this in the PowerPoint, but I wasn't sure I caught it. So first, will the digital meters and/or the cellular transmitters discover leaks that are on the city side of the meter or will they only find leaks on the customer squad meter?
They will primarily find at the phase one where we are installing meters really on customers' meters. It'll be primarily the customers' leaks that we will detect. Yeah.
It'd be great if we could find some way to use the technology to also find the other leaks.
I think eventually, eventually.
Great. Super. Second, I thought we had someone testify that every four seconds, the transmitter would go off. And I thought you said 20 seconds a day.
Yeah.
What, how often is the transmitter? I thought it was like three or four times a day, just for a couple of seconds. How often is it going off?
Three times a day for anywhere from four to six seconds.
Okay. And is that the only source of RF emissions from this device?
Yep.
And is there any other ultrasound? I don't understand that.
Not that I'm aware of. No.
Okay. Is, I'm wondering, as we all get deliveries to our house and the UPS people and the FedEx people come up and they drop stuff and they scan it and they transmit it. I would think that that would be a lot more RF emissions near my house than my meter, which is, you know, farther from my front door than the delivery people. Is that, do I understand that correctly, Nav?
Probably, or going through an automatic door at a grocery store will.
Oh, okay. Yeah, or even just all the teenagers that come in and out of my house with their cell phones going all the time, right? So, okay, and then, let's see, I'm just looking at my questions. The, does the proposed opt-out fee schedule cover the full city's costs?
We've calculated them to cover the city's costs. Yes.
Okay. And finally, just one more clarification on the device is the digital meter, it doesn't transmit or give anything off, right?
Not that we are aware of. So just to be clear, opt-out program does not include opting out of a digital meter. That is the new meter.
I'm crystal clear on that. Yeah, I'm crystal clear on that. I just, the opt-out program is just for the cellular transmitter. Okay. And it's, I'd love to hear what my colleagues think about this proposal, but thank you for answering my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation and I think it's good that you set, you know, both issues and both questions before us to talk about this. And I also appreciate very much the work that the commission has done. That's very important, and it sounds like they've done a really thoughtful approach to this, very thoughtful process. And I guess the question I have on this, well, actually, I don't have any questions on it because it seems that this is not something we're doing that's unique. There are lots and lots of utilities doing this and have been doing it for some time. And as Councilmember Robertson pointed out, we have all kinds of these, you know, same type of units going around us all the time. And I guess I'm having a, I mean, and I appreciate the effort of the staff to try to come to some compromise to acknowledge concerns that an individual has. And I'm not sure that, it didn't sound like the amount of money that we'd be collecting on this would cover what you indicated would be the cost of going around to 44 or probably more at some point places to collect these. And I'm just not sure about that, but it's, you know, collecting, trying to make that come even as good. But in the long run, it's the thing that also strikes me is that, so in five years, we're going to say, well, we don't believe you now, and we don't want to, we don't have to accommodate it. It just doesn't make sense that it's a false promise in a sense that we're going to let them do this, but nothing's going to change from that time to five years out. It just seems kind of, if we believe that they should have the right, so to speak, to do that, to not to opt out, then how can we take that away at an arbitrary time period? Because that's just for our convenience then. So it just, to me, it's, it causes more problems than it's going to solve. And I just don't, I don't, and I agree, again, agree that this is something that is around us. It's not, I mean, it's not scientifically based as far as any of us know, the concern. And I just think it's, it's, it's not an effective use of our time and energy and funds to do this. And I believe that if we say we're going to do this, you're going to have a number of other people say, oh, well, I want to do it too. So it just creates, and it also creates, I think, in the minds of some other people, a question, well, it must be something to it because they're willing to pay for it. So I think the, I appreciate the effort to try to arrive at a nice solution for certain, you know, individual citizens, but and ratepayers. But in the long run, I think, as you have done all over the years of this, you've really come up with a very solid program, and we need to implement it, and it's safe, and it's, it's something that we don't need to waste energy and money on to just to satisfy some people's concerns that are not based in any, that as we pointed out, there's a lot of difference in the facts and everything. So I would go along with the commission. I think they did a great job. And that's why we have them. That's why we have staff. You have good conversations together, and we get all these issues out. And I think it's a very good present presentation, and I would agree with I'm really excited about the program going forward and agree with it, but I agree with the commission's recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. I appreciate your rationale, and I'm going to argue the same from a different angle. And I'm going to say, you know, if in fact it was unsafe, unhealthy, and it, it risks people's privacy, I wouldn't want this for anybody. So I have to think that the commission examined the potential for danger and for risking people's privacy. And I just wondered if commission, if Chair Nezovic could could speak to that.
Sure. This has been ongoing for a couple of years now, and I do recall us talking about the privacy component, but it was a couple of years ago at least. And I recall that there was a fear where we would be able to track if somebody's home or the number of flushes and things like that. The presentations we have received from the experts and the utility staff debunked that concern.
Okay. And what about dangers to people's health? I mean, this is not attached to their house. This is attached halfway between their home and the, and the, what? The water main or is that the water main?
It's outside on the street. Now, were you going to say?
Just that, that it's, it's actually right at the, in the right of way generally, right by the street.
So did you look into, did the commission look into, look at the research to see if there's any research that supports risk to health of the individuals who are nearby?
Absolutely. And I specifically have invested numerous hours in addition to the presentation that we have received for last number of years to make sure. I also am very active in the community in a sense where I read, I hear what goes on. And I have seen the posts, for example, on Nextdoor where the concern was brought forward, and I was actually surprised and fascinated how little of support such posts brought forward. And that's why, that's not why, but that makes, gives me reassurance that we're on the right point, that majority of us, the other 37,000 have done our due diligence, and we're excited for this program, and we have no concerns.
Okay, thank you. Well, my feeling is that either it's right for everybody or it's not right for everybody. And my concerns about privacy and health have been answered, so I'm comfortable with the commission's recommendation. I see council members on, and then Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Chair, for giving us that, that thorough explanation for the due diligence that you did spend over the years looking at this. And this has been several years in the making. And so I just appreciate your thoughtfulness and looking at making sure that it is a system that is safe for the city of Bellevue and our residents. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and now thank you for the great presentation. And Chair Nezovic, thank you for being here tonight with child in tow. Appreciate it. You're making the time. Yeah, as a former liaison to Environmental Services, you know, I remember being a part of these conversations. And I really appreciate the work that the commission did even back then, but even up to speed or up to date now, they continue to look at that from a safety perspective and also from a security perspective. So, you know, from my perspective, Councilmember Robertson asked all the right questions there. I don't have any additional questions. And actually, Councilmember Stokes captured my sentiment on this pretty accurately. I trust the, you know, the science and the data regarding this. I trust the commission and their due diligence, and I trust the staff. And even though the recommendation is, and I appreciate their willingness to, you know, to satisfy everybody's needs. But it just seems this is not something outside of the norm. I don't think anything's going to change in five years. If you don't like it now, you're not going to like it in five years. But and, and, and I do think that this may increase the number of people that might say, oh, I'll just keep it the same way. I'm not going to make the jump. And I think that will add on to the cost to the, to the city and, you know, and then the future reinstallation efforts in the future, et cetera. So, so my, my thought and belief is firmly with the commission's decision on this is the right one. And, and again, I appreciate all their, all their good work.
Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any. Let's go ahead and make a motion here, Deputy Mayor.
Actually, Mayor, I'm not sure we need to make a motion since it doesn't appear that we're going to move forward with this, or do you still want to make the motion, still vote on the motion?
Well, I'd like to, what does staff feel that they need in terms, I'd like to take a vote on this.
That would be helpful. I think that would be helpful to sort of put this to bed. So I think your, your thought, I mean, your vote on whether you want to do opt out or not would be.
The vote would be to opt out on the opt-out.
Correct. Well.
I'll let you reword that.
Well, I think we're, we're taking a vote on the, yeah, on the opt-out. And I moved to direct staff to prepare legislation for consideration at future meeting to adopt non-communicating water meter service program fees.
No, no, actually, you don't want to do that. So that was, that was. No, no, actually, you don't want to do that. So that was, that was, that is the opt out. So I think what, because that is, if you want to do opt out, then you need to have us bring in legislation to implement those schemes.
So the motion would be to
Not offer.
Not after, not offer the non-communicating water meter service program.
I move to direct staff to not offer and adopt a non-communicating water meter service program fee.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven thirty-five, we're gonna take a, um, five-minute break, come back at seven forty. Okay, I think we're all back. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce the next study session?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson and council members. The second topic on your agenda this evening is the first, the update from the environmental stewardship initiative for two thousand and twenty-two. Tonight's informational study session will provide council with an update on progress toward implementing the Sustainable Bellevue Environmental Stewardship Plan as well as the overview of the twenty-two Environmental Stewardship Initiative Work Plan. Joining us this evening is our Matt Cummins, Director, Emile King, Assistant Director, Jennifer Ewing, Environmental Stewardship Program Manager, all from the Community Development Department, as well as Anna Hagera, Resource Conservation Program Manager for Finance, for the Finance and Asset Management Department. But then I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Matt.
I don't hear Matt yet.
Sorry, I had the mute problem there. I thought I got the button. Thank you. City Manager Miyaki introduced this item. This is your quarterly environmental stewardship initiative and update. And I know there's been a number of speakers at some recent council meetings wanting to talk about the ESI. So in our commitment to the council, we're coming back quarterly now instead of twice a year. And we're gonna go through a variety of topics and work that's been completed recently and then talk about what's coming up later this year. So I'll go ahead and hand it off to Jennifer Ewing, our program manager, and then Emile and I are happy to answer any additional questions at the end of the presentation.
Great. Thanks, Mac. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, and members of the council. I'm happy to be with you here this evening and have the opportunity to share an update on our progress. Again, this is for information only and we'll focus on an update on our progress on the actions in the plan and we'll talk about our work coming up for this year. So first, in your agenda packet, we provided a summary of our implementation progress over the last or work to date and in particular accomplishments over the last quarter. And that we'll be continuing to use that progress tracker quarterly as we come back to council. Wanted to kind of highlight the breadth of different things we've been working on across the departments involved in implementing the environmental stewardship plan. And then after this, I'll give kind of a highlight or a spotlight on a couple of the different major initiatives we've been working on. As King County Councilmember mentioned about the watershed management plan, the Utilities Department is moving forward with that, completing three watershed health assessments, also finished when the first phase of outreach last year. Moving forward with developing a residential energy efficiency program, which we can provide more of an update on at the next council update. We're still in the kind of earlier phases of designing that program. And working on some other things of our clean buildings, technical support program. And then to support a lot of this effort is our, the enhanced engagement work we were, we've been doing to really continue the engagement that we had in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty to develop the plan and really transitioning to working with our residents and our partner organizations to implement the plan. So in the last quarter, we've had a number of different working group meetings, meetings with our sustainability leaders group, and then most recently last week at town hall with our residents. The graphic on the right here is just kind of an excerpt from a recent residential energy efficiency working group meeting. We were having, talking about some of the different priorities for a home energy retrofit program. And, you know, of course, continuing to meet remotely, but, you know, really leveraging some, some different tools to try to make our meetings a little more engaging and gather input from our different stakeholders. And then also, in addition to all the work the different city departments have been doing to implement the plan, and this list isn't necessarily exhaustive. There's a little more detail in the progress report. We're also really pleased to share an accomplishment from one of our partners. The Spring District was recently certified as a lead for, with the LEED ND certification. That's LEED for Neighborhood Development. LEED, you've probably heard as a green building rating system. In recent years, well, actually, it's been more than that, maybe the past decade or so, they, they came up with a new green certification for neighborhoods, which the Spring District set out to apply for a number of years ago and the, the neighborhood development is far enough along that they were able to achieve that. So that's not only a certification for having a number of green buildings there, but also recognizes just the whole design and layout of the neighborhood as a sustainable neighborhood. So really excited to see Wright-Rudstead taking the lead in that and want to recognize that that is, I think it's also a great accomplishment as Bellred continues to develop. So one of the programs I wanted to spotlight for you tonight, this is a new program that we just launched at the end of last year called the Clean Buildings Incentive Program. This is a program for buildings in Bellevue over fifty thousand square feet to help them reduce energy use and improve their management of their energy use. Buildings over fifty thousand square feet in Washington State have to comply with the Washington State Clean Buildings Act by starting in two thousand and twenty-six and onwards, depending on the size of the building. And so buildings will have to meet a certain energy efficiency target. But in, over the next few years, to, you know, to incentivize buildings to get in compliance early, the state has set aside seventy-five million dollars in incentive funds. So our program is designed to help buildings in Bellevue get in compliance early. For those that are eligible, go after those state incentive funds and really help them reduce energy use. So we're working with McDonald Miller, a local engineering firm, to work with buildings in Bellevue to help them benchmark their energy use, look for opportunities to reduce energy use and help them with all the paperwork and everything to get in compliance. So I'm excited to get that off the ground. We've got, we're starting to work with twenty-nine buildings already, working with the Maidenbauer Center. They have some good opportunities for saving energy and it looks like they'll be eligible to pursue the wash, the early adopter incentives plus some other incentives from the state and Puget Sound Energy. So our, our consultant will help them kind of package all this together to look at how they can make some energy efficiency improvements, you know, with the, the least amount of investment and really taking advantage of different funding sources available. Also working with Bellevue College and a number of different buildings downtown. Also, I wanted to note this program for the state law, only commercial buildings have to comply, but multifamily buildings are also eligible to apply for the early adopter incentives. So our program is really also looking to not only work with commercial buildings, but also in particular, multifamily buildings serving, you know, affordable housing properties. So want to help those buildings reduce their energy use to save money for Bellevue's low and moderate income residents. On the city operations side, one of the big efforts we've been working on over the past several months is a green fleet strategy. So looking how we can achieve our goals for a hundred percent electric light duty vehicles by two thousand and forty. Working with a firm that's worked with cities around the country on, on different green fleet strategies and electric vehicle strategies and figuring out not only just what are the kinds of vehicles that are available now and will be available soon in the future that are electric, but the, the really complicated part, I think we're learning is just how do we get all the EV charging infrastructure in place in our facilities, you know, particularly in City Hall and the Bellevue Service Center? What's the most cost-effective way to do that? How might we kind of phase some of that in? So I think it's good timing with a lot of the federal infrastructure funding coming out where there, there are some, there are going to be some larger pots of money for EV charging infrastructure. So this study, I think, has hopefully positioned us well to understand our needs for our own fleet. And then we've been working on some different projects for energy efficiency in city facilities. We finalized a grant agreement to do some energy efficiency improvements and received some grant funding from the Department of Commerce. And we were also awarded a grant from the Department of Commerce to install solar on City Hall. So working through some of the, the details for that and how we can make that project pencil out. But excited for that. I'd say, you know, the kind of key theme here for a lot of the municipal operations projects is kind of strategic investments and how can we get the, you know, sort of biggest bang for our buck, if you will. And that kind of goes for looking at how we electrify our fleet and also, you know, down to how do we, you know, care for the, for our urban forest that the city manages, the forested areas on parks, properties. And we're looking at that through our urban forest health assessment. So I think a big focus on kind of maximizing our investments. And so to give kind of a high-level overview of where we're at on progress, so with our quarterly council updates, we'll provide an update on the plan implementation progress. And then once a year, we'll provide an update normally in the July timeframe on our greenhouse gas emissions inventory and how we're doing in terms of, you know, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. We normally do that in July because not all the data is available this early in the year. So we have to, we use data sets from different sources, like from Puget Sound Energy, from the PSRC. So kind of waiting for them to compile all the data from last year. So to give you a sense of where we're at with, you know, beginning work on implementing the plan, since our last update to council, we've started ten new actions, incorporated nine actions that we had kind of as considered started more into the ongoing operations. So that would be, for instance, like the tree giveaway program. You know, we said that we had started that one. We've kind of transitioned that more into an ongoing program that we're working on. So that's kind of an example of how we maybe kind of change the classification or update the classification on some of these. In terms of the newer things we've started, a few things to highlight, whoops. The Transportation Department has recently launched the curbside management plan, which will help us to plan for different modes of transportation coming into Bellevue. Also look at opportunities for EV charging in the right-of-way and working with different transportation options, for instance, like some of the corporate buses and that sort of thing. We started work on the home energy retrofit program design. And then also started work on a tree canopy assessment. So looking at, which hopefully, let's see, by either the, the next council update or certainly the one after that, we'll be able to share some updated tree canopy data with you all. So beginning work on a number of new things for this year. And then, yeah, just to give you a sense of where we're at of the seventy-seven actions in the plan, we've either started work or incorporated into our ongoing operations about, you know, seventy-five percent or so of the actions. So for a five-year plan, after year one, we're, you know, pretty well on our way with about the three-quarters of the actions, or I should say at least have started work on at least three-quarters of them. So shifting gears to talk about our work plan for this year. We're continuing a number of different actions that we began last year, starting a handful of new things. Few different projects to prepare us for the comprehensive plan update, looking at our climate vulnerabilities. Looking at, you know, air quality, in particular in proximity to our freeways. And then some other projects that can help us, you know, really prepare for some federal funding opportunities in addition to the green fleet strategy. The Transportation Department's going to be leading an EV roadmap project to really help us look at where might there be some other opportunities for EV charging throughout the city. And then some other things here for, on the energy side, we'll be continuing implementation of the Clean Buildings Incentive Program and then also looking to launch a home energy retrofit program this year. And then we've heard quite a bit, you know, interest in our tree canopy or tree regulations. So later this year, plan to look at how we can, where there might be opportunities to update the land use code and the clearing and grading code. And then sooner this year, the Transportation Department is planning on updating the, the part of the tree code within the transportation code. So there's a few different pieces of, of our codes that touch on trees. And then underpinning a lot of this work will be the enhanced engagement. So the various working groups that we have will be, you know, helping to provide input on, on a number of these different projects. So what's next? I think the, the main things here are really just continuing to implement the plan, looking for strategic opportunities to scale up some of our work with federal funding or looking at partnerships, you know, for instance, with some of the other eastside cities for a couple of the different actions. Continuing to collaborate across departments to implement the plan, you know, as we worked on our work plan for this year. And then also as we start to look at our efforts for two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four in the budget process, continuing to work together across departments to identify opportunities to, you know, further advance the implementation of the plan. And so, yeah, that summarizes the, the presentation, you know, again, just for information on our, our progress over the last quarter and to give you all a, an overview of what we'll be working on this year. And yeah, thank you very much and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, for the presentation. Are there any comments or questions from the council? I see Deputy Mayor followed by Councilmember Stokes and then Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. A great presentation, Jennifer. Thanks for the, for the update. Looks like we're making some, some great progress across a number of different priorities on the, on the work plan there. And I wanted just to ask you a quick question regarding something that maybe is somewhat hidden in the plan or doesn't maybe get enough attention as it maybe it should. I wasn't as concerned about this a couple of years ago, but I'm increasingly getting very concerned about the impact to litter in the city of Bellevue as I start to see, and I'm not sure this is due to COVID or coming out of the winter or what have you, but the accumulation of litter that I'm starting to see on the side of the roads, in parks, et cetera. As you know, litter can really create havoc with our environment, especially to get into our waterways and to our lakes and streams, et cetera. And I, and I know in the plan, I believe it's strategy W two maybe about waste reduction. But I think that has more to do with, you know, eliminating plastics, et cetera. But do we have anything currently in place right now to address litter? And/or are we looking at any partnerships? Because there are some national organizations that do litter control and, and litter patrols. And we even got one here locally with Bellevue Green and Clean that goes out and picks up litter from different parts of the city occasionally. So can you, can you address that for me?
Sure. Yeah. And yeah, litter is definitely something that's come up, I think, since the implementation of the plan is a concern for some residents. We do not, it's not something we really addressed explicitly with an action in the plan, although I think, you know, as, as for instance, Utilities Department is working on the watershed management plan. You know, street sweeping is coming up as a possible strategy to improve the health of our streams. So litter, I think, is, as we've looked into this issue more is something that's kind of addressed by a number of different departments, kind of depending on where it is and what the issue is. Since the adoption of the plan, the state has also rolled out some, a new campaign, an anti-litter campaign, and I'm forgetting the name of it, but And I'm forgetting the name of it, but they have quite a few different resources that we've been trying to help, you know, promote in our in the community. In terms of partnerships, yeah, we're definitely supportive of our, the resident group. The Bellevue Green and Clean in their work and interest in trying to, you know, remove litter in the city. And I, you know, I think it kind of is an ongoing issue that I think will, you know, want to continue to look at how we can maybe improve our our services around that.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And but I I'd love to see us do something for Bellevue specifically rather than wait on the state if if it all feasible. I mean, certainly this is the plan, but I just see this as a growing concern. Plus, it hurts our hurts our brand as a city, as a very clean city as well. But in addition to the impact that it causes our environment. So thank you so much, Jennifer. Appreciate it.
Okay, next we have Councilmember Stokes, followed by Councilmembers on. Councilmember Stokes, I think you need to unmute still. There you go.
There we go. All right. Jennifer, appreciate very much the the presentation and I'm really have to say I'm really thrilled at the approach. And appreciate your current focus on, you know, providing progress on the programs and and how they fit together. And I know you're you're seems to me we're we're kind of getting to that phase, which is what you have been saying. We're kind of getting to a phase. We're not quite there yet. And it seems to me you're really in a much more now really moving forward on this and piecing some things together in a way that I think is very, very helpful. And I appreciate particularly, you know, your significant work on on implementation of each of these pieces and how they all fit together and then expansion of of our scope. It's clear to me when you're talking about this, a lot of these are areas that two or three years ago, we weren't talking about them the same way. So that's that's all very good, putting all those pieces together. And that's that's a lot of things going on. The the thing that Deputy Mayor mentioned, I think it's interesting to think about it, but it's 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 one of those things that is important. It's environmental and it's it has something to do with the way people treat their, you know, treat the city and treat their, treat the land. And it's not specifically a an environmental services goal. But certainly we can come up some programs and working with other organizations to do that. And it brings me also to the same kind of issues that we have with the tree cutting that's going on. And we've got a lot of concerns from, and that's that's something that is not, that that the environmental services really isn't involved with as much in a stance. But it's it's impacted by the changing in in the building and and a lot of issues that come up on that. And that's something we're know you're attacking on that, but that's that's very important. And the issue of trees being cutting down and more litter is is something that is is very important to people. It's it's not as big as some of the other things, but I know you're working on that. And again, I appreciate the significant shit work on expanding and tying together the work you're doing. And it's, I'm very excited about it and very pleased with the the progress on it. And, you know, look forward to working with you on a lot of new things that are coming up. And as we get into other issues on clean water and those kind of things too. So a good work. Appreciate the presentation. And I think, you know, you're, the the presentation this time is really, really good in terms of tying all the pieces together. Thank you.
Councilmember Sun.
Yes, thank you, Anna and Jennifer, for all your work. You know, you're the the mighty dual that gets so much done related to the ESP and I really appreciate it. I thought the town hall was excellent with information to the community. And kudos for the the lead neighborhood award for the Spring District and the solar for City Hall. I think those are the kind of things where we model the way for what we want to do. And we do have a long ways to go. I would say to my, to the Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Stokes, you know, I hope that we actually can get support for a adopt a litter, adopt a street program that I brought up last year at the retreat. I think that there's actually lots of cities, Kent, Auburn, SeaTac, that are already doing these programs where they, it doesn't take a lot of resources to make that happen. And it's a great community building event to go out and and pick up litter with your neighbors and and help keep our our streams and our streets clean. So I would love to see us embarking on a program like that. And I would say that the other part of it that I was thinking about is how do we move faster with our green local procurements is one of the items in there and reducing operational waste and building retrofits and green fleet. I think it's in there already as items. And I know that the governor is very interested in looking at how we accelerate our EV infrastructure as well as the both the vehicles themselves and conversions to green fleet as well as putting infrastructure in place so that more and more electrification of vehicles can happen. So I think we're well positioned for that. I guess I would just say that I am, while I'm really glad of the progress we've made to lay this groundwork, I remain concerned about whether we are on the right trajectory with both staff resources as well as the the funding to make these improvements to get to fifty percent reduction by 2030. So I know that you mentioned the data will be available in July, so we can look at the wedge analysis, which is the actual impact to our greenhouse gas emissions. Because I would like to see in the tables a a better understanding of the weighted impact of these different actions, so that as we complete them, how much are they actually contributing to greenhouse gas reductions in the wedge analysis? Because right now it's not clear from the data we have about whether we are meeting are on our way to meeting our goals based on the contributions from these different strategies in the impact wedge analysis. So I look forward to when we get the updated information in July, so we can, we can see how we're doing. I'm just concerned that if we begin with the goal in mind of twenty thirty fifty percent reduction, that we are not on track yet to meet that goal. So I hope that we can pivot and still get back on track, but I would like to understand more about that.
Hey, do you want to respond, Jennifer, or is that for in July when you come back?
I think, yeah, we can definitely provide more information just on on how we're doing and the, you know, greenhouse gas emissions for 2021 when we come back in July. And then in terms of looking at kind of the relative weight or impact of the different actions, I think we'll have to give a little thought to just how we we share that. But yeah, I I think I I understand, I think, what you're you're interested in. And so, yeah, we can definitely think about how best to to weave that into our our progress report.
Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and then if anybody else wants to comment, please let me know. You know, I I thank you for the presentation. We really are interested, so I'm glad we're having these more often. I have to credit the city. A lot of the criteria for the lead ND in the Spring District was mandated by the city. So, you know, the the things that got the Spring District that certification were because the city really pushed for it. So I'm very proud of that. And then I love what the Spring District has done. And I honestly just think that everything that's built in Bellevue from here on should be sustainable. And there's no excuse for not putting that front and center. So I appreciate seeing this work with the building clean energy buildings. And I'm wondering, are you doing retrofitting as well or are these just with new buildings?
Do you mean for city facilities or in in the community?
In the community, our office buildings.
Yes, so the our, the Clean Buildings Incentive Program that we launched recently, that will be focused on retrofitting buildings in the community.
Buildings?
Existing buildings, yeah.
Well, I I sure hope we have a big outreach on that because these building owners may not be aware of what you're offering them. But we have some big offenders in our city and one of them is our main power center. I believe that needs retrofit more than most buildings. So I hope there's a way to target that so that as a city we can lead by example. The other thing is, I'm very concerned about the tree canopy and the fact that between now and whenever we get done with our analysis of our tree canopy, how many trees will be unnecessarily cut down in develop redevelopment of neighborhoods? So is there any way to expedite looking at these building codes? Is there another city that has a tree code for development that we can follow and and consider implementing sooner than later if there's a will of the council to do that?
I think there, just to give kind of a a quick answer on that, there there definitely are other city codes we can look at. I think, you know, where the complexity comes in is, you know, a lot of the engagement with the development community and and residents, it's pretty complex issues. And so I think, you know, in other cities where the tree code update has taken time that, you know, some of just the engagement that's necessary to get into a lot of the technical aspects of the code is kind of where some of the, where it can take some time. But Mac, I don't know if you wanted to to chime in a bit just on this and some of the other kind of land use code work that's happening.
Yeah, thanks, Jennifer. Yeah, Mayor, we are, this is absolutely on the work plan and we are working with Development Services. As you all know, there are a number of code amendments that are wanting to move forward, some around affordable housing, some around these kinds of topics. So Mike Brennan and I are spending quite a bit of time going through that, so we can bring back to you a more comprehensive list of those code amendments and and their timing.
Okay, when when do you think that's going to come back to us?
Hopefully soon. I mean, because we've got a lot of other, a lot of things we're trying to launch. So I don't have a specific date in mind, but as soon as possible.
Like before June or could it be in a few years?
No, this is, we're we're working on the 22 work plan now and and most importantly, the timing. So there's a sequencing of things we have to do around the the major comprehensive plan update, launching Wilburton and a bunch of the housing work. And we need to make sure we slide in this kind of thing as well, so that all those big initiatives are are off and running.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? Not seeing any. We will move on to our third study session item. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce that?
Sure. The last item on your study session agenda this evening is the ratification of the 2021 King County Countywide Planning Policies and the 2021 Urban Growth Capacity Report. And just by way of background, the King County Council approved these policies in December of 2021. And in order for these policies to be adopted, they must be ratified by at least thirty percent of the city and county governments. So consequently, tonight, the staff is seeking direction to bring back these policies for proof at a future council meeting. Joining us this evening are Matt Cummins, the Director, Emil King, Assistant Director, and Tara Johnson, Comprehensive Planning Manager, all from the Community Development Department, and I'll turn it over to the team.
Thanks for the introduction, City City Manager Miyaki, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tara, I'm not seeing the PowerPoint show yet. If you want to try and reshare it. Okay, well, I'll continue on with some of the the introductory remarks while Tara gets the PowerPoint loaded up. So staff from community development are here tonight to walk council through the highlights of the newly adopted King County Countywide Planning Policies and the growth targets. Tonight, we are seeking direction from council to ratify the countywide planning policies. This is an opportunity that cities in King County have to show their support for the planning policies, which were adopted by the King County Council as City Manager Miyaki mentioned in December of last year. With council direction, we would then return with an ordinance at an upcoming meeting to show the support council has for the the planning policies. I'd like to briefly provide a few opening remarks for this item. It's really, it's really timely to be bringing this forward to council tonight. This item shows the importance of regional planning and the role Bellevue plays as a leader in regional policy development and the establishment of the growth targets. Bellevue elected officials and staff have put in considerable time over the past year working with others across the county to help develop this effort and a lot of the details that you're going to be seeing tonight. These policies are very important because they help inform the city's comprehensive plan periodic update. We do every eight to 10 years. It is planned to be launched by council later this month. So I'd now like to turn things over to Tara Johnson, our Comprehensive Planning Manager, Comprehensive Planning Manager, to walk through the presentation for you.
Thank you, Emil. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, New York House Council Members. And first off, many apologies for my technical issues. Hopefully, we won't have any more this evening. Just a little bit of an, just a brief recap on what we're going to be covering this evening. So just City Manager Miyaki and Emil gave you kind of the context, what we're going to be doing this evening, providing you with a little bit of background on the countywide planning policies, which a couple of elected on the council have been very involved with, Councilmember Robertson, with her role on GMPC, and Mayor Robinson, with her role on the Affordable Housing Committee, have been very instrumental in moving these policies forward. We'll also provide an overview on the growth target setting process. Kind of just a big picture recap on what the CPP overall changes are and then where we are in the process and how how we intend to move forward with council council direction this evening. So a little bit of context, I know that some of this is probably very familiar to you, but just wanted to provide a little bit of background on the relevance of the CPPs and how they fit within the overall state framework. So the Growth Management Act requires that counties adopt countywide planning policies, which of course are required to align with the regional growth strategy, which is of course PSRC's Vision 2050. There's also some additional requirements to comply with the Growth Management Act legislative changes as well as recommendations from the Affordable Housing Committee Action Plan. And then the countywide planning policies, once adopted, do inform and guide our periodic update, which is going to be forthcoming to council fairly soon in the next few weeks. So a little bit of background on how important the countywide planning policies are. So of course, as I mentioned just previously, it provides guidance and informs the scope of our comprehensive plan update. It also, it also establishes growth targets for each jurisdiction, which both county staff as well as staff from other jurisdictions, as well as their elected representatives, worked together over the last couple of years to negotiate growth targets and establish what each jurisdiction share of that countywide growth looks like. Alongside that is the Urban Capacity Report, which really supplements and analyzes how we come up with those growth targets. In addition, the planning policies also incorporate criteria for both urban centers, which Bellevue already has a designated or a regional urban growth center, which is downtown Bellevue. That's been established for some years now. And then one of the big changes with the with this new update this time around is establishing criteria for countywide centers, which are smaller urban centers, smaller size than urban centers. And they quite often incorporate high high capacity transit station areas or neighborhood centers that are linked by transit. They also provide a good mix of housing and services and then serve as local focal points for investment. So a little bit of background on growth targets. We went through this process over the last year and a half, and I believe King County staff came before the council in April of last year and provided you with a little bit of an update there. But essentially, it sets the amount of housing and jobs that each jurisdiction, including Bellevue, is going to plan for as part of the next periodic comprehensive plan update. It's also adopted as part of the countywide planning policies, which got adopted by the King County Council in December. And then it covers a 20 year period from 2021. And then it covers a 20-year period from 2019 to 2044. So that's the time period that we're going to be planning for. And then, as I said, it's a very collaborative effort regionally with both cities and the county. So a little bit of an overview on some Bellevue-specific information. As I said, downtown Bellevue has been designated an urban growth center by PSRC's Vision 2050 for some time. And then in addition, Bellevue is one of two metropolitan job centers. So we really do play a very significant regional role in the area. And with this round of growth targets and the CPPs, we really worked hard towards achieving a more equitable jobs-housing balance, which was also a mandate from Vision 2050 and the CPPs. With the last, with the 2035 update, we had a jobs-housing balance of 2.4 to 1. This time around, we aim to get a 2 to 1 jobs-housing balance. You may be familiar with some of this data because I think we presented that to council previously. We're moving forward with an established 70,000 jobs target between 2019 and 2044 and then accompanying 35,000 housing units. As you can see from this chart, that results in we have sufficient capacity for our jobs, which is about 117,000 jobs. But as you'll note, there's about a 10,000, closer to 10,000 net differential in terms of a housing unit count. So that's something substantive that we're going to need to address as part of this comprehensive plan update. And some of our other accompanying efforts that Director Cummins referenced, the Wilburton planning, as well as the Belred sub-area planning, all of those efforts will give us the opportunity to really plan for this growth in kind of a sustainable and very comprehensive way. Some of the larger changes associated with the CPPs, it's a 500-page document. So I wanted to highlight some of the bigger areas of change. As I mentioned before, we now have countywide centers that are part of the CPPs that weren't there before. So that's something we're planning for. Bellevue has submitted and been approved, which will need to be planning for a total of five countywide centers, which are our mixed-use growth centers in the city. And so that's something we'll have to incorporate as part of our planning process for the periodic update. We also are planning for, of course, the 2 to 1 jobs-housing balance. There are some significant changes relative to the housing chapter of the CPPs, which I'll just briefly talk about shortly. And then looking at both the CPPs as well as our upcoming update, placing both an equity lens on it as well as a climate change lens on all the policy areas. So some of the major changes relative to the housing element include, of course, aligning with Vision 2050 and then the Regional Housing Task Force Recommendations, which is something that has informed a lot of the work associated with the Affordable Housing Committee and the Growth Management Planning Council. As Councilmember Balducci mentioned in her update, something that's a strong emphasis area, just something, work that's been ongoing and work that will continue is strengthening affordable housing accountability and how we really look at that in a regional and a local way. Then there's also an emphasis on how we address health and equity within our comprehensive plans and on a countywide, and in a countywide way. And then also looking at going back and addressing historic discrimination that may have occurred in the past relating to housing. Something that I've talked about previously, another emphasis areas, of course, the countywide centers. And then really incorporating social equity and public health into our various elements within the chapters within the CPPs. And then lastly, of course, planning for growth targets. So with that, a little bit of just an overview on the public process. So you may, some of you may recall, the CPPs went off for public comment early last year. GMPC approved that, approved the CPPs in June. They moved forward to King County Council in December of last year. Now we're at the last step of the process, which requires ratification by about 30% of local jurisdictions, cities within the county, which represent about 70% of the population. So with that, requesting council to provide direction to staff to return with legislation to ratify the 2021 CPPs and also the Urban Growth Capacity Report. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tara. Well, Councilmember Robertson, why don't you start us off and then I'll put your hand up and I'll call on the rest of you?
I was trying to fix my setup. Thanks, everyone, and to Emile and Tara for the overview. Yeah, I wanted to just give, I think I've talked about this once before, but I wanted to give council an overview and then share my perspective on this. I don't have any questions, but we did have a rather robust process. As you know, I was, through the last 12 years have been the city's rep to GMPC. And the city proposed four amendments. I mean, we've definitely influenced the development of the CPPs. And then when the draft came out, we proposed four amendments, all of which went through. We also did ask for the higher growth numbers, having a 2 to 1 housing to jobs, which brings our housing-jobs balance a little bit closer. The CPPs have a great deal of focus on equity. They have a great deal of focus on housing more than before. And I appreciate the mayor's work and her continued work on the housing committee that fed information into the CPPs. For 2022, we did vote, I did vote on behalf of the Bellevue Council to support the GMPC draft of the CPPs, which then was approved by county council in this year for ratification. So I definitely will be supporting ratification. In 2022, there will be some additional county policy work that just didn't quite get finished up. That is the housing work that Mayor Robinson is doing on, which will then be fed to the GMPC, which Deputy Mayor is the new rep to GMPC, and I know he'll acquit himself very well and represent Bellevue very well. The other thing is that some of his growth targets were really, really artificially low because they had a moratorium on one of their utilities because of one of their utility issues. That moratorium's been lifted, and so the some of his growth numbers are going to be reconfigured, increased, and that will be amended, that will be brought forward for amendment this year. The, I just wanted to point out if the, there was a table up on the slide that showed where we are on the jobs and how many, you know, how, where we think we are and where we are on the housing. And we, as we're zoned today, are not going to make our housing target. And so it's going to be a really heavy lift in the next few years between the comp plan update, between Wilburton and Belred. If we're doing any missing middle outside the growth corridors, or if the state says we're doing missing middle, all of that's going to need to be cranked in, but we're going to have to get a little bit more aggressive on our housing stock to make sure that we're zoning really well for that. So I know that we are up for the task, but I just wanted to point that out because we can't just do it by going the way we are. We have to be more aggressive with the zoning, as you've heard me as a broken record on this issue. So I guess that's all. I'm happy to answer any questions if people have any questions about the process as I went through as the city's rep, but otherwise, I would encourage us to move this forward for ratification. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Stokes?
Thank you. I remembered Councilmember Robertson. I think one year I was your alternate on the committee. And you know, you've been in some really great work on this, and it's really good to see this brought back to what we're doing. And I think what we've laid out here is a lot of work that's been going on for years and years and years. And it's also, I think, reflection of what's been going on in the community and in the state and the area and in, you know, just what we're living through. And the good news is we're responding to it, I think, very well and appreciate the work you've done all over this time. And it ties in with, the good thing is, it ties into work we've been talking about. We've gone through the last several years, kind of some painful attempts to up our game and move things forward. And I think they've been very instructive and we've come through those in a pretty good way. And what you're, I like the way you laid this out. It's time for us to move forward. In fact, we don't, I think we should not call it a Belred look back. It's a Bellevue, Belred look forward. We have to go forward. Backwards is not the way to go. And it's very encouraging to have us, I think, all of us looking at this is we have this tremendous opportunity in front of us now in Bellevue and the region to really move forward. And with these plans and with all the work going into it and everybody coming together in a really kind of amazing way. I don't, I don't think the problems we have in front of us are going to stop us. And I agree with you. We have to up our game in terms of looking at how do we get more people living in Bellevue in a very positive way. And that's what, people are going to come here. And we don't want to get to a point where people come here and there's no way, place for them to live and the jobs, you know, all those things go south. So I think what we're looking for, looking at now is a really good roadmap for tremendous progress. And we'll look back in 10 years and say, wow, Bellevue really hit, put the foot on the pedal. And a lot of it goes to the work that's been done in our groups and work you've done in others in this. So I'm ready to vote for it. I think it's great. Let's move forward.
I like your look forward, Belred. I agree with you on that. Councilmember Zahn?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and I support the ratification as well. My, I agree with my colleagues about us getting a lot more aggressive about housing. I was also looking at that table about the adopted growth targets and seeing that, make sure I'm reading this correctly, the place where it says capacity is what we are currently projecting, we are going to be able to do for housing and jobs. Is that right? And the reason I ask that is because the target for housing is 35,000, capacity is only 27, and capacity target for jobs is 70, but the capacity is 117,000. So if we're actually going to get more jobs, then we're even going to be further behind in housing. Is that correct? And then my second question is, when I look at the table in the report, that looks like it identifies affordable housing needs by AMI, will we actually get that aggregated to what the Bellevue allocation is going to look like? Or are we using the estimated percentage that's in the table H1 that shows what percentage we think of the housing stock is going to be needed in these areas? Are we expecting that same percentage for Bellevue?
Councilmember Zahn, I'll go ahead and answer the first question and then hand it over to Tara for the second one about the affordable housing process that we have. The slide that you referred to, you should read the 35,000 housing units and the 70,000 jobs as our targets that we'll be planning for. And that was the county process to identify those targets. The line item that said capacity was an effort of all cities to go through their existing zoning capacity to accommodate either housing units or jobs. So the way to read that is our target for jobs is 70,000, but we already have zone capacity to accommodate over 100,000. And from a housing standpoint, as Councilmember Robertson pointed out, our target of 35,000 housing units is roughly 10,000 more or so than our capacity right now. So that's why we need to take efforts in the next plan update. Belred, look forward, Wilburton, to get more housing opportunities in the city. And Tara, sorry, sorry, Councilmembers on.
No, it's all right. Thank you for that, but I'm just making sure I'm clear. What you're saying on the jobs, though, is that based on current zoning, we potentially have almost 50,000 more jobs that could come to Bellevue, which then, if we're looking at the 2 to 1 balance, means that we're even farther behind with housing.
Yeah, if there was development that was located in that zoned land for jobs.
Okay, I see.
Yep. And Tara, if you want to go into a little bit of detail about the process to establish housing targets as well?
Certainly. Thank you for that question, Councilmembers on. I think Councilmember Claudia Balducci spoke a little bit about some of the upcoming work that the Affordable Housing Committee and the Growth Management Planning Council and Councilmember Robertson referenced that as well, that there are, you know, changes that were going to be forwarded to both the Affordable Housing Committee and GMPC this year. Part of that is trying to figure out how that H1 table translates, which is essentially the regional countywide need, how that translates to a local jurisdictional level. And so that's something that's going to be part of the work program. In addition, Commerce is also under household 1220, is also undertaking some of that work and is going to be assisting jurisdictions with that. The timing of that is a little inconsistent in terms of the commerce work is going to be completed by the end of the year. So that's something that both staff, staff are just monitoring and trying to see what the best way to incorporate all of that work into our overall update and what that looks like.
Okay, so maybe then, I think, Mayor, you might have brought this up already in the past about the fact that our Affordable Housing Strategic Plan is now five years old and that maybe those numbers in there need to be updated for getting a lot more aggressive to meet these goals that we have committed to as part of this plan that we're going to be ratifying. Thank you.
Yeah, and that is exactly what was going to be my point tonight is just, you know, to put this all into context. We take these original goals of the 2 to 1 jobs to housing. And if you accept what the Housing Development Consortium recommendation is for Bellevue that we be creating 1,000 affordable housing units a year, that means that by 2044, we would have had to create 25,000 affordable housing units, which would be 71% of our planned housing units. That is aggressive. And our little pithy goal that we set, you know, when we really, it seemed like a stretch at the time that we set it, but it is so woefully low. I really look forward to bringing it back and reexamining what a realistic goal for affordable housing looks like for our city. But I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and I will be supporting it. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Number one, I really want to thank our representatives serving on this committee because it's very challenging. You're working with a lot of jurisdictions that may have influence and may have ultimate say about what these goals has established. I assume that these goals are established based on our representatives' input, right? That your help and deliberation as to what we can do realistically, what we want to do realistically and what we should do. I mean, all these are part of the considerations. So I'm just curious about, you know, the cart and the horse, you know, which one come first? I assume that when the goals are developed, we, you know, know what we can do and what we, as a city, as a jurisdiction, realistically, having our own plan, we're working toward achieving those targets. So I feel if we do that, then we won't be surprised. We should always have the right number if we know the employment, if we agree on 70,000 new jobs. That is realistic, we want it. Then we need to be planning for how many housing way back when? So that we could be doing all the things that we're doing that without being surprised, wow, gee, maybe we don't, we can't do those things. We're going to do something. And we may be trying to catch up. And I don't know whether that's the case. I'm not that, you know, familiar with it. But I know that you guys have hard jobs, the representatives, trying to put all these together and talk to our other counterparts and negotiate, come up with a reasonable, you know, numbers. So I would like to hear a little bit about this from Jennifer. So I, I would like to hear a little bit about this from Jennifer Robertson said that, you know, we, we have a real job to do to catch up. So, you know, if we think we have a hard time, we cannot do that. Then we need to include that as part of our negotiation to come up with the numbers, with the targets, right? Well, at least, you know, and if we can, you know, when we negotiate, I would imagine we already are thinking about what's our capacity and how we be, should be already be preparing for that. So maybe Jennifer, you can say a couple of words just to give me a context of how do we arrive at these goals with, with certainty that we already doing it with the Bellevue policy in mind? Or they just tell us and we got to hurry, hurry, hurry to something we, we may not be able to do, you know? So which one come first?
Mayor, can I respond?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a great question. It was, it's, well, as you know, it's based on, you know, how, what we think the county growth is going to be. It's about how we think the cities are going to grow. And at the end of the day, it all comes down to a negotiation. So the initial targets were set at 27,000 housing units. And Emile, correct me if I am off on this, with 60, no, 54,000 jobs. So we had, we wanted to have a better housing jobs balance. So the two-to-one was fine. A lot of cities aren't doing that much. A lot of cities are doing far fewer housing to jobs. But at any rate, we wanted the two-to-one. And so that was the initial targets. And as the representative, I talked to staff and we said, we're going to, we're going to blow through that jobs target probably in the next five years. So we really think that we should get more aggressive, which means we should get more aggressive with the housing. So we did ask for and negotiate the more aggressive targets. And those, those were done by taking, I think they were done by taking allocations that were unallocated, if you will, just numbers that were going to just kind of be floating out there and the not necessarily assigned to any city. And those were assigned then to Bellevue, to Seattle, et cetera. And we asked for that and because we wanted to get more aggressive. And that's why in my opening remarks, I said we have to really up our game in when we rezone in Wilberton, Belred and elsewhere to, because these housing targets are going to be a heavy lift. And it is going to be hard to make sure that we get the housing targets. And so we need to make sure that we are doing what we can. And I know I've been a broken record about this, to make sure that we have additional capacity built into our zoning. And so, yes, I support the targets. Yes, they were part of a negotiation. Bellevue did, was absolutely at the table for that. And yes, we know it's a heavy lift, but I think it's fair because we're going to see more jobs. We should at least try to have at least, you know, two-to-one balance, understanding that we have about 2.4 people per housing unit. So in theory, if we, if every one of those housing units has 2.4 people, well, you know, you don't have a fourth of a person, but on average across them, then we will have the same number of jobs and housing for the people that could fill those jobs. So, you know, but we're going to have to get more aggressive on the housing. And if we end up seeing more jobs as it develops, you know, then we could, then we'll need to probably be even more aggressive on the housing. But right now, I think that we can do it, but it's going to be hard.
Thank you.
But we're up to the task.
Yeah, okay. Can I finish up? I appreciate that perspective. I just was hoping or thinking, maybe I missed it. You know, if we, the council, do we kind of be, or were we on, on the, on the, in the know when we are deliberating this kind of negotiation? So that when we approach our housing development, we know that this is what we want and we have a target to go for. It would be easier for us to have the complete reason and rationale that we want to be this aggressive, we want to set this goal and rather. So do we go through that process or do we just? Well, anyway, I hope you know what I'm thinking about.
Well, I know that I came to council when we wanted to go forward with the increased goals. And I shared that with the council and got a head nod from all of you. You probably don't remember it, we do so much work. But I did get a head nod for all of you to go for the more aggressive targets and because I felt that was important, so.
Well, I appreciate the explanation, extra explanation tonight. Thank you for that. Is there a, not seeing any more comments or questions? Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to direct stack to prepare legislation for action on the future consent agenda, ratifying the 2021 King County Countywide Planning Policies and the 2021 Urban Growth Capacity Report.
Hand up, though, Mayor, before we.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was leftover. Okay, do you want to stop the vote here and, and comment, Councilmember Stokes?
We can vote now. I just wanted to say and back up what Councilmember Robertson's saying. When we'd five, what, 17, 16, when we kind of came up with our, Councilmember Lee, with the numbers in the past, we, we were making a stretch that times a different time period. And we were, things have changed so much dramatically here. So that was, and, and we kind of knew that that was not really what we need to go for, but it was more than we had ever gotten before. So it's a progress on this, and it's come to council. And then as we've gone through, I can remember several times when these things have come up, we have acknowledged that we, that were more people coming in. And when, when Amazon and others started having people coming in here and the growth has hit us so much, it's all been a process, and this is very logical. And what is exciting about it is we're not just saying, well, is this something we can absolutely achieve? We're not, we're not, we're setting goals that are really, they're, they're hopeful. And if we don't do it with hope, then we just get stuck and we, we're, we're in a good path. And I really think your, your questions are good, and I think they've been answered in the sense that this has been discussed. And what, what Councilmember Robertson is talking about and what we have proposed is really, I think it may turn out to be, we say, well, we kind of hit it, hit it on the nail and are, actually, we're going to need more. So I, I think we've, we've addressed these issues, and I really support this. I think this is, is a real move for us in the current circumstances.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions?
I was completely satisfied with Councilmember Robertson's answer.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This was seconded, correct? This motion, was it seconded?
Yeah, and I said aye, right.
All right, so that's right.
And this will come back on consent?
Pardon?
Consent? It'll come back on consent?
Correct.
Okay, great, just checking, thanks.
So it is 8:50. We'll take a 10-minute break and come back at nine o'clock. Okay, welcome back. We have one more item on our agenda. This is a bland use item. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce, please?
Sure, sure, Mayor. Given the, this, the quasi-judicial nature of this particular matter, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Curle to introduce the item. Kathy? She here?
Hi, Anne. Thank you, Mr. Miyake. Good evening, council. So the item before you tonight is consideration of the Glendale Country Club rezone application in which the applicant seeks a rezone of a 3.35 acre portion of the Glendale Country Club and rezoning it, seeks to rezone it from single-family residential R1 to multifamily residential R10. And the rezone is intended to be consistent with the previous comprehensive plan amendment that was approved by the council and by the EBCC. And this is a process three quasi-judicial matter. The hearing examiner recommends approval and with one condition and no appeal was filed of that recommendation. So at the January 18 meeting of the council, Riley Pittman from Development Services gave a staff report on this rezone application. And the matter is now before you for final action on, on an ordinance and on the application. So if the council tonight chooses to vote to approve the application as recommended by the hearing examiner, then staff has prepared ordinance 6648, which was included in your packet. And if you make a different decision, we will come back at a different meeting with a revised ordinance. So Mayor, before you deliberate and vote, because this is quasi-judicial, I would recommend that you give all the council members an opportunity to disclose any ex parte contacts they may have had with opponents or supporters of this project.
Does anybody have any ex parte communications to disclose? If you do, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any, so I don't think that's an issue for us. This has come to us before. And so this should be quite simple. Is there any more presentation here, Kathy?
No, I'm, I'm turning the floor to you.
All right, so it's the final action. Are there any other comments or questions on this? Not seeing any. Deputy Mayor, would you please make a motion?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to approve the application and adopt ordinance 6648, approving with a condition rezone application permit file number dot 21-104464-LQ, rezone of a 3.35 acre portion of the Glendale Country Club located at 13440 Main Street from R1, single-family residential, to R10, multifamily residential.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, terrific. Well, that concludes the public portion of our meeting. We are going to recess into executive session for about 30 minutes now, or 20 minutes, hopefully, and discuss a matter pursuant to our CW 42.30.110 LI. And the meeting will be adjourned from the executive session. Councilmembers, you will exit this meeting and then you will look at your most recent link that you received from Charmaine, the clerk, and rejoin an executive session right now. No break. Thank you.